Okay, so, welcome everyone to the February meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. And roll call please.
All right, Brown.
Here.
Ace.
Here.
Lamp.
Here.
McDonald is excused. Olver.
Here.
Shingles is excused. Therring.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Squaterito.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you. And I want to welcome our new member, Everett Bradshaw. Welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you with us. Next item is approval of the agenda. So you've got tonight's agenda in front of you. The usual reports and comments and two new business items. And then extended public comments. Are there any corrections to or changes or concerns with tonight's agenda? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion was by Olver, second by Therring to approve tonight's agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have our agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes. We last met on January 21st. Those minutes start on page two of your packet.
Just one correction on page two and that first paragraph at the top, the last sentence. Because of this, they would prefer not to disturb that area. It said a we.
Okay.
We'll page it down.
Yeah, I marked it. The second page.
Oh, yeah.
End of the first paragraph.
Okay.
I would also like to say that my last name in both the roll call and in the last movement on page 003 was misspelled. There should be an E at the end.
I'll add that onto this draft as well.
Okay. Yes, we want to get people's names right, so we'll fix that. And then I had one other thing. On that page three, well, it's page two of the minutes, page three of the packet. Right after what she mentioned about we versus they. That sentence that exists by itself, I wonder if you mean Mr. Parker and Elder Jensen? Because wasn't there only one Jensen here?
Yeah, I think that was Mr. Parker was the other person from the architects.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have. Anything else on the minutes? Okay, so noting a couple of word changes at the top of the second page. And correction to Commissioner Brown's name in roll call and in the roll call vote. We can have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected or as amended.
So moved.
And support.
Uh, well, no. So who wants it? Who wants it? We'll give the motion to the new guy. Motion by Bradshaw, second by Brown to approve the minutes with a few small corrections. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, minutes are approved. Next item is our correspondence/board report/presentation section. First item is Commissioner Therring, updates from Board of Trustees.
Thank you. On the 8th, we reviewed some governance policies and heard a presentation from Kim Smith talking about our Public Services Department. Also, on the 8th, I have to backtrack because I don't know that I mentioned this on the, maybe I did. Maybe I'm going to repeat myself. On the 8th, our Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny, and our head of our Finance Department, Sherri Teal, gave a presentation of their respective departments as well. So if you'd like to hear a little bit more in depth about each department, go back to the 8th meeting and watch that, and go to the 22nd meeting and watch that. It's in the beginning in the presentations. It's definitely a good idea. On the 12th, we looked at, we have two developments that are part of a pilot program which are, that have low-income housing. And they came pilots, it's a pilot program, stands for payment in lieu of taxes. So they have came before us to ask if we would lower the payment from 10% down to 5% for the Springbrook project and Cranbrook Senior Living from 9 to 5%. And what that does is, it does have an effect on monies that go out throughout the community. But it'll also allows them to reinvest that money that they're not paying back into the project to help maintain our low-income housing. So we both, we, the board, agreed to go ahead and approve that. And... Yeah, I think that's it. That's all I have to present.
Questions for Commissioner Therring on Board of Trustees related matters?
Or I said 5%, I think I meant to say 4%. I meant to say, my apologies. We went from 10 to 4 on the Springbrook and 9 to 4 on the Cranbrook. My apologies for that.
How long are those four?
They got several year, like... Is it 2040? Yeah, 2040 is when it actually ends. But I think if they want in a certain period of time, they can apply to no longer. And correct me, stop me if I'm wrong, they could, they could at some point in time remove those from low-income housing, or actually apply to do that. And make them more like marketplace apartments. At some point in time, that's a little ways down the road. If I read that correctly, if I'm wrong, correct me, but...
So the tax break is contingent on them continuing to remain as low-income housing?
Yes.
He said at the meeting it was pretty detrimental for him to be able to maintain without having the tax reduction because I think he was pursuing turning them into like a market rate, right?
They were looking into it. So they have, they're, I'm assuming a fairly big entity that has more than one project throughout the state, so... And they have some that are not low-income and they have some that are, so... They were just kind of looking at all their options and thought, you know, we, some of these projects need some things done to them. So they were asking if we would consider that, and after our discussion, we, the board, felt that low-income housing is something we don't have maybe enough of or a lot of. And we want to do what we, do our part to maintain that, so... We felt, we didn't feel we had to, we just felt it was a good idea to do that.
Okay. Other questions or comments related to this topic?
Meeting, you want to see, I do have a breakdown of the monies that would not go out, that people would be reduced throughout the county, so...
Okay.
There's really only one, the local schools probably take the biggest hit in that respect. And after that, I mean, it's all, in my opinion, not worth getting excited about when you talk about the monies that they won't receive, or the less they won't receive.
How do you confirm as a board that the money is actually being put back into those units then?
Well, we ask those kinds of questions, and typically what we should see, one thing we talked about is seeing building permits. So, no, there's, we can't go out and knock on their door and say, hey, you said you were going to do this, you know, what are you doing? But they've talked about doing, I think, some roofing projects and some other various projects that they feel that needs to be done. So we would kind of see that happening.
Are those units part of the rental inspection in the township?
Mr. Nanny, if I missed something, please step in.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Commissioner McDonald's not here, and I'm guessing ZBA hasn't met recently, so we'll pass that. Next item is the Community and Economic Development Monthly Report, which you have in your packet. That's the report that we have in our packet each month. Detailing activities, what's happened, what's upcoming for us, for other boards, for the Community and Economic Development Department in general. Are there any questions from commissioners on anything that was in the monthly report? We always take time to give people a chance to ask any questions that they might have.
I have a question. I was looking at page two at the bottom, under zoning administration activities. And I see where it says a development team regarding options for a new private school project. Is that something, have those people come before you before, or is this something kind of different?
This is a group that came once before.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's anything that does spark your interest, you can always ask Rodney directly. But we'll go ahead and move on. Any other reports or any communications, correspondence, presentations, anything that anyone is aware of that needs to come before us tonight? So we'll move on. At every Planning Commission meeting, towards the early part of the meeting, we have a public comment which is restricted to items that are not on tonight's agenda. There's a more extended public comment later in the meeting, but this is the initial public comment, restricted to three minutes on items that are not on the agenda. If anyone would like to address the Planning Commission on any item that is not on the agenda, they're invited to do so at this time. We ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes. And comments are limited to three minutes. Public comments open at 7:14.
There's nobody online.
Okay, we do have an electronic boardroom that people can be in, and there's no one in there right now. And there's no one coming to the podium, so we'll assume that folks are here for other business. Second call for public comments. Okay, last call for public comments. Okay, so again, there'll be an extended one later, but we'll go ahead and close public comments also at 7:14. So we're ready to move on to new business. We have two new business items. The first one is a presentation and discussion of the proposed special use permit 25-01 and preliminary site plan 25-02 for a proposed open-air accessory structure dealership business at 4694 East Pickard Road. And we'll go ahead and have introduction from Rodney, then we'll hear from the applicant. And then we will have an opportunity for commission questions and discussion.
Thank you. Both the items on your agenda tonight, a little bit unusual. These are, these are applications that for one reason or another are not ready for your final action. But in both cases, they have reasons to come before you, except for this initial discussion. This one, this is a change of use for existing site on Pickard Road. It does, because it's a change of use, it does require a new special use permit approval. The site was an automobile dealership. It's been vacant for quite some time. But there was no record of any special use permit ever being approved for that open-air activity. So we've asked them to pursue the special use permit as part of this process. So there will be a public hearing scheduled for this. But the application, as noted in the report, there were some deficiencies associated with it. Most of those have been taken care of, but we understand that the applicants, the work can't take the other. Couple remaining items we noted here, so it could be ready for a hearing. But we were asked to have this, go ahead and be on your agenda for tonight just so you could take a look at the plan as it is right now. Ask questions about what's proposed, if you have any, and even if you have any feedback related to the site or related to what's planned that they might be able to incorporate into updated plans. Just looking for that feedback from the premiers of commission. In formal manner. The, we include our report on page 18, we include the standards for special use approval. We don't have any comments about it at this point, but they're there for your reference as you're thinking about this business, that dislocation. But the key for tonight is really just to introduce the project and to give the applicant the opportunity to get any feedback from you that they, as I said, they might incorporate into plans. So intent is essentially right after this meeting, they'll be wrapping up updated plans shortly thereafter. Hopefully they'll bring this back to you fairly quickly for a hearing. So with that in mind, I'm happy answering additional questions if I have, but there's also representation from the applicant here tonight too.
Are there any questions from commissioners for Rodney at this time before we invite the applicants and/or their representatives to talk to us?
I do have a question. So what specifically is the rationale for having, for requiring a special use permit? I'm trying to understand, like, it's an open-air dealership business. Is that just zoning does not allow for it typically?
Well, first of all, the open-air business requires a special use permit.
Always.
And, yes.
Okay.
And the previous operation there, there's no record anyway of a special use permit associated with it. It may simply predate that requirement. And in that case, it would be considered legal non-conforming use. So this is also a change. It's a different type of business, different type of impact. And an expansion of that open-air activity. This business is proposing use more of the site than the former operation did significantly. Because of storage of inventory. So for all those elements, we consider it to be a change of use that needed the special use permit.
And how long has the property gone, I guess, unused approximately?
Well, I've not, I've been here for five years and I've not really seen anything change on that property.
Okay.
So I don't know how far back before that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions for Rodney? He's obviously going to remain available to us. All right, thank you. Yeah, so now we'd like to invite the applicant or applicant's representative to anything you'd like to tell us, and then also stand for questions.
My name is Shanae. You usually get to deal with Tim Beebe.
Oh, yeah.
My boss. But he has decided in this beautiful weather to go on a cruise. So he's a smart man at this time. But, yes. Our client, Old Hickory Builders, are looking to basically have a site to sell pre-built sheds, display area up front, inventory in the back. And because it was already a use for a car dealership and stuff, they figured it was a good use for that site. They've been in the community for over, well, 1997, which I have a letter from them. Unfortunately, I didn't get it over to Peter in time yesterday because you guys were closed and stuff for the holiday. But I will have resend that to them so he can share it with you guys. They speak about how they've been in business since 1997. How they've got a manufacturing community or a manufacturing site up in Clare where they're actually building the buildings. They won't have that here. It's just for display. It's just for storage. So that once they sell them, they'll be on the site to have them ready to ship out and stuff. But none of the actual manufacturing. But they are a local business. Clare's not that far away. So they'll be, they've added to the community. They look forward to expanding into more places in the community. And they have locations all over the state and actually outside of the state. So that's why they're looking into having it where it's right on the road, a lot of frontage, a lot of traffic. Good area for people to see it in, so... They are expanding the site right now as according to the plans. It's asphalt up front that isn't going to change, but they are going to put gravel in the back to make it where it's, of course, to set the sheds and stuff or the buildings so that they are not in the dirt or on the grass and stuff. We're also expanding the detention to improve the drainage and stuff since we are going to be altering the site. And doing the necessary improvements. We've talked to Rodney about quite a few things that we can improve because as he said, the site hasn't been used in multiple years and definitely hasn't been changed in quite a few years. So we're hoping that by bringing in the new business, it'll help just make it look visually more appealing on the area and stuff, so... And I guess, really, whatever questions you have for me, I can answer.
The expansion going back into the gravel bed into the back, is that going to just be running up to the existing tree line right now, do you think, or it'll be, will it stop short of that?
The existing tree line on the sides, on the back, I know that there's going to be screening. I'm not sure if it's running all the way back there because there's going to be a detention pond. It'll go to gravel and then a detention pond. So I believe the detention pond will go up to the trees.
Is the office building going to be, that's proposed, going to be like a prefab building, or is it going to be a stick-built on-site?
No, it's going to be one of their prefab buildings. They're going to bring in one. We did talk to Rodney and Peter. We met with them. The location on those plans that you have, the new plans you will be getting, it will be changing because we discussed that it would be a better location to have it up tucked in the corner more up by the driveways and stuff. So that it just makes it where they don't have to do so lengthy an improvement on the leads to run to the water. The sidewalk, connecting sidewalk to the other sidewalk for the interior. They wouldn't have to run it all the way through the whole site. And this way it gives them a chance to have display area along that back part where that office is right now. Which, like I said, that'll all be addressed on the new plan coming. We didn't have a chance to do those changes and we wanted to do it all in one thing, but we are already incorporating that. We've discussed it with the client, and they also have seen that it would be more beneficial for them to do it. They just had to get, it was one of those of having to get the higher-up stall, be on board with everything, so... But yes, there will be a new plan coming. We plan on having that probably wrapped up next week. We will be getting it to you. Like I said, they did send a letter over, which is one of the items that was requested that we are... that we are fulfilled. And we will be addressing all of the special uses, the standards where that way you know we're not prohibitive of anything, we're not harming any neighbors, everything's within reason and harmonious with everybody around it. So, so the special use would be, wouldn't be a major issue on granting that one. So I guess is there any other questions you guys have?
So I'm looking at the, at the plan as it currently stands. That front piece, which is, I gather, is the asphalt portion.
Yes.
You've got proposed display areas, which I guess would just be like...
Yeah, they'd just be the model setup.
Yeah. So are people, when people come in from Pickard, are they basically just, they'll be, they'll be, are there going to be painted parking areas?
Yes, there will be parking spots along the front of the office that are, on the plans you have now, of course, it shows the parking in front of where the proposed, but when we move them, we'll move those parking spots also so that they're in front of their office and stuff, so there's designated parking spots for them.
It's not a complicated project, but if you do see anything, you do want to, if possible, give them a heads up now.
Rodney, the special use requires a public hearing. Did I read that correctly?
It is, yes.
And that could come as early as next month?
Yes, it could. The, it sounds like the information will be ready for that, so I think you can expect to, to have a hearing on your agenda for March.
Thank you.
I'm not as talkative as my boss.
I don't have too much to say. It's an open site that could use some development.
Yeah.
Trying to buy two other open air.
Yeah, with the dealerships alongside it and stuff. It seemed like a logical place. That wouldn't be...
Probably better that you waited till after the construction on the road these times.
Yes. Yes, they probably, unlike some of the other sites, tried to build while that was going on. They're going to take advantage of everybody enjoying to actually be able to drive down all those lanes now.
Okay. I, I think we're probably okay for now.
Okay. If there's any comments or anything you guys come up with that you need us to address, just send them to Rodney or send them to Peter, and we'll be happy to address them in a way. Unfortunately, the client, they do, they are out of Tennessee, or, yeah, Tennessee, so they aren't going to be here, but they will be here for the public hearing so that they can answer your questions and stuff if you have questions for their particular, how they're doing stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Tell Tim we said hello. We missed him while he's in a big, nice, big boat somewhere.
He will be here next month.
Okay. All right, so we look forward to hopefully seeing that in March. So ready to move on. The next item is also a new business item. It is a presentation discussion of the preliminary site plan application from Mid-Michigan College for a proposed thirty-nine thousand square foot event center on the campus at twenty-six-hundred South Somerton.
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy of our report, dated February the eleventh. This, noted, this is another case where the green plan before you, it's not ready for final action, but, but there are some things that, that the applicant and staff would like to share with you and get some feedback and direction on. As you said, this is a pretty substantial project on the Mid-Michigan College campus. So preliminary site plan, and so often when we're looking at preliminary sites, preliminary site plans, there are details that you can take care of, and we'd love to see in our reports, take, fix this and the final site plan kind of comments. Unfortunately, it was one that we could not, two, that we could not take care of that way. They're related. One is that they, they referenced and used the standards for public and institutional buildings to base the events that are building on. Public institutional buildings is a category in our ordinance that includes a height exception. It's largely intended for churches, but it could also be other, other public buildings where there might be a need for additional height beyond what the, what the ordinance would require. So it had, it has a provision based in there that allows additional height if you set the building back further from the property line. Unfortunately, the, the definition of, of public institutional building in the ordinance specifically excludes colleges and universities. And frankly, also it excludes public recreational facilities, so it covers it completely that this particular event center is not a public or institutional building. It's our ordinance defines it. So with that in mind, then there was no option for the, the height exception that they, that they cited in their plans as a basis for making the building forty feet tall when our B four district only allows a thirty-five foot building as a maximum. So that really is the key issue, the height, building height, that, that prevents us from being able to recommend this treaty for action tonight. Because essentially, it would be inappropriate to prove that preliminary site plan has an ordinance violation associated with it. Typically, that kind of a case, we have to, it's greatly revised, we prefer to the Board of Appeals for a variance, if that's warranted, they want to go that direction. But nonetheless, unfortunately, we can't really take action to approve the part. So what, what we've done here in, in our report, and the applicant is here as well, they can go over this, some of these options as well. On, starting on page three of our report, we have some items there as potential ways to address this height issue. As noted in our report, the building's listed on the current plan at forty feet. The applicants have indicated that might actually end up being a little taller as they work on the final engineering of that building. And that based on the design requirements for this type of event center, it could not be made shorter. We asked about that. They did look at that, and the applicant maybe addressed it further, but essentially said they cannot fit within the thirty-five foot height limit. So what, what, what we'd like to bring to you tonight as part of the discussion on this particular item is, is this list of options to resolve the, the building height deficiency with regards to our zoning ordinance. And, and you'll see there, items A through, through F, there's sort of a menu of, of ways that, that either the applicant or the township could take actions to, to, to make a change here where this building might be able to meet the ordinance requirements. I was going to hit the highlights of the, note, A, there is a text amendment where we just simply change the height standard for the, the B four zoning district. That certainly can be done. That text amendment can be initiated by, by you as a planning permission. It can also be initiated by an application from the applicant. If, if something like that was done, we'd recommend that we go to forty-five feet, simply because we are, if you've already heard, that the building's probably going to be taller than forty. So we're sort of taking that next step. One of the challenges there is, one of the reasons to take this action is that the other two business districts actually have a forty-five foot height limit. The B five, the B seven district have, are, have a taller limit. They are kind of, can certainly be more intensive business districts. The B fours tend to be the least intensive of the three business districts. And that's, Lequide has the shorter height limit, but that doesn't mean it has, it has to remain at that level. The, the other, the other reason to keep it at thirty-five is that we do have an office service district that's, medical offices, professional offices, that, that also has a thirty-five foot height limit. So the B four and the OS tend to be located together on the, on the zoning map. Not in every case, but they tend to be located together. And so that thirty-five foot height limit, coordinate that with the OS, also has, makes some sense. So some, some pros and cons to a text amendment. Another option would be to add or expand that height exception that's allowed for public institutional buildings to include the college or include public recreational facilities, however we want to put that, to, to, to expand that option. That would also be a text amendment. Items C's of...
Rodney, real, real quick, just on that, is there history or indication as to why colleges, universities, et cetera, were not included in that exception in the first place?
It's a good, a good question. I don't know all the reasons why. The ninety-one ordinance had, had a similar definition, similar term, that it did not have that language excluding colleges and universities. It also did not have the height exception, though. So in that ninety-one ordinance, the buildings were subject to the height standard in the zoning district. My best guess is it was simply done to, to separate out college, because they, their list is separate in the ordinance. You have, you have public institutional, and then you have colleges and universities. There's two separate land uses now in the current ordinance.
I've often thought of the college as both public and institutional, so I was puzzled by that description.
Well, one thing I'll say is that, as I said, I mentioned, public institutional include churches, for example. Churches often have steeples, and steeples are often far taller than thirty-five feet. And in the interest of ensuring that, that religious institutions can express themselves through having a tall steeple, this, that, I think that's one of the reasons the height exception exists, is to allow for that type of building to exist on a property, simply without a large peak or setback, and have that taller height for that element. It's a common thing for, for churches to run into problems with local zoning-related building activities. So I think that's one of the reasons why this is in there. And that may be one of the reasons why colleges and universities were separated out.
Got to be careful of those tall steeples right across the street. We have one that toppled over in the wind.
It's that way.
That way, yes. Thank you. Is that a pretty easy fix, then, the, the text amendment to include colleges, or is, is there a recommendation that a better option would be available to us?
Well, again, this, part of the reasons this is coming to you is to, to, to get your feedback as to what direction you feel you would prefer to see, if anything. One of the answers is, and the last one really, is for you to do nothing and to say, you're going to have to work with the standards. And that is a completely viable option. We do not have to change the ordinance. We do not have to respond to this. We can simply say, if we're staying under thirty-five feet and we need to fix the plan. But because this, there, there are possibilities in, like I said, I'll try to, anything we bring you, we're going to make sure of all the options available. And so these are just all the possibilities that you could, if you chose to, choose to say, we prefer to see it go this way. Frankly, you could also simply say that, you know, leave it up to the applicant if they'd like to apply. Because the applicants cannot only apply to rezone property, we'll talk about that in a minute, they can apply for a text amendment. We've, we've had this before with regards to solar energy where we had somebody, Coin Oil, David Coin, wanted to put up a particular kind of solar array, freestanding solar array, for a church on River Road, and it happened to be two feet taller than our ordinance allowed. And it's the same design he has over at Coin Oil Properties, but in the wrong direction too, Coin Oil Properties. And, but those are in the city. Anyway, after looking at the issue, he, he ended up applying for that text amendment, and it was considered, hearing was held, ultimately it was approved, it's out of the ordinance. So it is something where an applicant can propose through that application process, a text amendment as well as rezoning. So.
Planning Commission can also initiate that?
Yeah. The key tonight, I think, for you is if you have a preference, if you have, if you see some, a way that seems to work best from your perspective, from the public policy perspective as planning permission, that's, I think, the feedback that would be good to get back to you.
Hey, I have a question. One of the amendments you, or one of the variance resolutions you suggested was applying to a zoning mode for appeal of variance.
Yes, yep.
Which, I mean, maybe is more appealing to me because it is a very restricted change. It's not going to affect other buildings in the future. It's just going to affect this one problem, or this one project, I should say. But you just noted that there were significant hurdles in overcoming that due to demonstrating, you know, it was necessary, not self-created.
Yeah.
But in earlier you had mentioned that in the design plans, that kind of the basis structure for this full plan was requiring the forty-five foot height variance. So I guess I'm wondering into like, what would the zoning commission look at into self-created versus more of an inconvenience when the plans are kind of, you know, falling apart if it's not on that height?
Well, those are, those are two separate standards. Put them together in a sentence, but they are two separate items. One is that, that the reasons for the variance are more than, than mere inconvenience, that's the language of the ordinance, that, that, or inability to obtain a higher financial, financial return, I think is another part of it. But it's the idea that this is, there has to be something, typically it's something inherent to the property, inherent to the, to the site, not, not to the business operation, not to the college operation, but something inherent to that site that is causing a, a practical difficulty with applying with the ordinance.
Okay.
So that mere inconvenience is, well, we prefer to have forty-two feet, let's say, and if the ordinance says thirty-five, well, okay. You've got to come up with something that's pretty strong here, something that's more than just we prefer to have. And the, the, not self-created is an interesting one. The applicant actually cited that when we sat down about this, the design standards, and it's the idea, it's not their, they're not their design standards, they're national standards related to these types of facilities. And it's certainly an argument that, in their shoes, I would make to the Board of Appeals. My concern is that, as I said, the ideas with the variance is typically, there's something associated with the site. There's something in that, that lot, that configuration, something in that, the physical nature of that that is creating the problem.
It's appeal for variance based on the structure of the grounds. Structure of the land, not on the structure.
Not that, not that some national organization is saying it has to be acts.
Great.
Because almost, there's many cases where you can, you can come up with that and say, well, required to do acts. So, because there are other zoning districts where this event center could go without a trouble. There's quite a bit of land available in the B five and the B seven, where this, this could go in, but have no issue with the height standard. It just happens to be on this site that has a different zone.
Slightly different variance.
So that, that's the challenge. I see that it should be a very high bar to get over.
Yep.
I'm not saying they couldn't do it, but it would be a very high bar to get over, particularly those two standards. It, it is an option, but they also could be turned down. That's the other element. And frankly, Board of Appeals should deny more requests than they approve. In most cases, we're very fortunate, in most cases, we have very few requests to go to the Board of Appeals, and those, those are true, usually the ones that end up before them truly are a judgment call. Really, there's no other way to deal with this than to the Board of Appeals to act together as a judge and simply make a decision. So it is an option for me.
If we as a board suggested doing the text amendment, the B option, to add the height exception, is there additional setback toward the additional height, or are there no stipulations about that in the zoning?
Well, that's, at the current exception, it has that one-to-one ratio for, and we can certainly do something similar if, if you want to expand that height exception to, to the college as well.
Having been a part of the, when Mr. Coin came before us, I liked that way of doing it, rather than the planning commission just making it, I, if that's what we go with as B, should we decide, I would like to see the applicant be the one to come before. I just like the way that process worked. A little more information, I, I felt.
I'd say B sounds like a much larger scope of a change, though, when it comes to options. Because it's staying here, that like, this would add an exception for, you know, not only this current... Because it's staying here, that like, this would add an exception for, you know, not only this current project going forward, but any other business school, college, university that wants to.
It's still a pretty limited, limited slice of businesses that would be there, though, so.
Is it only a site, is it site-specific? If we did the amendment for this?
It's, it's the zone, zone specific for the B four.
Just for B four.
So like, yeah, college, university, they already have K through twelve schools, museums and libraries, which are very functionally similar to colleges and universities. So I think the, expanding the scope specifically for this is not as large as it sounds.
It sounds to me like this was something that maybe should have been covered in the past. Maybe this is a, it's a good reason for, you know, may, might be a good reason for us to go that route.
Especially if no one can think of the rationale for why it would have been.
Right, yeah.
And apparently it was in nineteen ninety-one. It was considered a public institution. So why it changed between nineteen ninety-one and now?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But the ninety-one ordinance did not have the height exception.
It didn't have the height exception, but it did have the text for saying that colleges and universities were specifically called out as being public institutions, which that's, I guess that's what confuses me.
Yeah, just, they're not just a separate landmark, that's, they're still in the ordinance, so just.
When did the college start using the B four district? Was that after nineteen ninety-one?
Do you know how long that property's been zoned before?
It just may not have been a consideration if the college weren't operating there yet.
Well, I know the, the college is zoned before. I know for a previous project that we had, the remainder of the property was zoned R one, which we had to rezone to B four. I believe it's probably been B four since the first project, which would have been in the early twenty-teens, twenty-tens.
Was there anything you wanted to say about the other options? I mean, we've kept, we're sort of homing in on one of them, but.
So the other options, I'll just say, I'll actually skip D for just a moment. Item E, that's a straight rezoning. If we did rezone it to a B five or B seven district, along with that would come the higher height standard of forty-five feet. There's somewhat of a challenge there, as noted, that the property's not master planned in that direction, but it is an option. I already mentioned simply that directing the applicant to revise the height and bring it back in. Item D is a planning development. This is one that we suggested. It's one that could be helpful sort of in the longer term in that the college does have long-range plans for other projects on their campus. And the planning development can be used to essentially establish zoning specifically for the college. We've seen it before with one other project here. But it's a flexible zoning where an overall concept plan or conceptual development plan is tied to a PUD zoning district. So the plan becomes the zoning of the property. And this is one where, if they have other projects in mind, it could be used to kind of lay out a conceptual plan for the whole site. But as part of that, the PUD has a section simply called regulatory flexibility. And it allows the applicant for a planning development rezoning to propose changes to what otherwise would apply to that site. So let's say, let's say we have thirty-five feet right now. They say as part of this PUD, we're going to set a forty-five-foot height standard. And it will include some reasons why typically in those requests for limited modifications. But it is a way for the applicant to take care of some of the things that are unique to Mid Michigan College's campus, unique to their, their future plans, and also to address this specific event center project. So it is an option that's available to them, and it would sort of incorporate both what amounts to an amendment to the ordinance because it contains limited modifications right on the plan and approved then as part of the rezoning with, as I said, an overall conceptual plan for these five zones. So that's available if the applicant chooses. What I would suggest for you, if you're, if you're interested in going the route of changing the, or adding, or expanding the height exception, my suggestion is to have staff do that, because that's a little bit more involved of a text amendment. And so that's one I think that might be best if we simply took that on. With regards to simply changing the height standard for the B four district, that's a very simple amendment. So that's one that you could either have direct staff to propose, put together amendment to come back to you for a hearing, or you could have the applicant do it. But the height exception one, my suggestion is maybe to have us take care of that one, just because it's a little bit more involved to get the text correct.
I don't think we were planning on writing our own text. I think, just speaking for myself, I think B or D make the most sense.
I agree.
I feel like D or B would be maybe a bigger topic of conversation about changing the zoning for an entire area versus D, which I think limits us really to just what's getting presented in front of us, you know, while still giving the college enough flexibility to really plan out how they want to go in the future without that, you know, without the height ordinance standing in the way.
On the other hand, what if we have another school or a college come to us with this issue?
I think that would be another then issue to look at.
I guess I have a slightly different view. When Mr. Coin came and talked to us about the solar panels, he pointed out that the technology had changed and the standard heights had raised, had been raised. So to have a lower height basically hampered everybody who wanted to do freestanding solar arrays. And it sounds like if they've got sort of national standards that they're trying to follow for a particular type of building, you know, twenty years ago, those probably weren't the standards, but they are now. And so then I think it's a matter of us trying to figure out how our zoning best fits changing times.
Yeah, exactly.
Even if it's specific to one project, it probably is going to impact others potentially too.
Agreed.
And I'm also thinking of where they're located, and this is very specific to their property, where they're located. Are the neighbors going to care if it's, you know, forty feet instead of thirty-five feet? No. I mean, I think part of it too is sort of where they're located, they have, I mean, they're just, you know, an area that's less populated, but I can see in other areas that are more populated, then that height could make a real difference. So it's hard to tell. Do you have the map of the B four zoning in your zoning packet there? I'm just curious how much of the township would be affected by the text amendment change.
Do we have the zoning ordinance map in this, or is it in the, I think it's in the master plan?
So the, so the B four tends to be around the fringes of the commercial areas. There's, there's several areas along the Isabel Road corridor that are B four. It tends to be around the edges. It tends to be closer to residential. Well, this seems like there's not a lot of housing there. There's actually housing right against the campus on almost every side. To the east, of course, is Chippewa Township, but there's houses directly across the street. So it would have an impact, especially with any future planning, that they would have the ability to have a height or height potentially close to neighbors. I would suggest, before we go too much further, to have the applicant know that they can, or they may have some thoughts along this as well.
How tall is the existing building there?
Existing campus building?
Yeah.
I don't have the answer to that right. Okay.
I believe it's forty-five feet. The stair towers, it's a component, the front zone, Broadway, and like center.
So the proposed event center, Marty, is not going to be taller than the existing building, so we're not creating a new problem. What we're doing is creating a nice facility that's going to benefit our community.
We're correct. And when we built the C lab, which is what we call that three-story section with that big stair tower, that was, we didn't have this issue.
Actually, just so you're on the mic, will you come up to me?
I gave the presentation.
Took an extra second there before you jumped.
Apologies. My name is Marty Ryder. I'm a project architect with Hobbs and Black Architects. We've done all of the college's work since two thousand nine on both campuses. Forget the exact year. We built the C lab, which is a three-story that you see on Broadway. But, yeah, the stair tower there is well over thirty-five feet, which is the tallest component of that, any, any structure on that campus. And, yeah, we weren't underneath the, or we weren't, the thirty-five-foot rule was not in place when we developed that and came for a cycle.
Question, you mentioned a stair tower is forty-five feet.
No, the stair towers.
How high does, because actually stair towers can be over.
Well, stair tower creates access to the roof. I don't know exactly, but hypothetically, it might be about five feet short. So to the, to the top of the green roof there, but I could definitely look that up and, you know, the exact elevation.
I apologize. The reason I mention it is because the ordinance does have certain height exceptions built in. Things like stair towers, that's one that's specifically listed, that it can be above that height maximum, so.
I'll turn it over to Matt Miller. He's the VP of Mid Michigan College, so.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Matt Miller, VP of Student Services at Mid Michigan College. Thanks for having us tonight. I don't have the pleasure of being on a cruise. That would be nice. Before we jump into the whole zoning and building height and all that kind of stuff, let me just take just a second to provide a little context for everyone and why we're here and how we got here. Mid has been, over the past couple of years, working on campus master plan, finalized in late two thousand, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, beginning twenty-four. And we, as Rodney pointed out, really kind of laid out the campus and said, where do we think we need to go? And that's all fine and good, but what we did in addition to that was gather community feedback, student feedback, in fact, land staff feedback, and really get a sense for what the needs are in the area and how the college can help, you know, contribute to fulfilling those needs. One of the projects that kept coming to the top of the list was an event center of some sort. And in fact, we had about a hundred and forty-six different projects in the campus master plan. A few of them rose to the top, and this is one of them. There are a few driving factors there. Certainly athletics is a part of this. You've seen that the building, an event center, sounds like event center, but it really is, for our purposes, a gym with lobby space and classrooms and fitness area and those kinds of things. So it is built for that purpose. There's a lot of athletics, basketball that we have right now and volleyball that we'll probably add when we, when we have space for it. We've been at Morey Courts, great facility. We've been there for about thirteen years, and we've just outgrown it. And we've talked to them a lot about what we could offer if we build our own event center, how we could help them with their needs as well. So, so that's part of what drove this. In addition, the event center monitor, I guess, came to be because we want to do more with it than just athletics. You can put tarps down and you can have other events in there. And so commencement is one that we would probably hold there every year. Tom and I have been talking about this for a long time. Mid, right now, holds its commencement ceremony at Clare High School, which is not a great look for a community college. Clare High School's great. It's very nice of them to do that for us, but we need to have our own space. And so that would be the largest of the events we'd have there once a year. We'd get a good chunk of people in there throughout the year. Probably a few events every so often where you get to two to five hundred people, where we have a career fair or a job fair, or maybe a speaker comes in or something. So we'd be doing that throughout the year as well. And that's really the other driving factor, our other community events and college events that we could then host here. Certainly lots of places in the community have events. We think we can, college is used quite heavily already for some of our meeting spaces, and so this would complement some of what we're already doing and helping with the community in Mid Michigan and across the state, because people tend to come to this area for trainings and things, and so we've been a good partner in that as well. So this, this building does that for us. It's been a long time coming. We've been thinking about this for years and years and years, and so we're excited to move forward. And we were so close until we got to that building height thing, and I apologize, I misread. I assumed we were institutional and public institution or under that area. It is clearly marked. I just totally missed it. So, so that's why we're here tonight, is to talk about that and any other questions you might have. So, how can I help? Oh, I should mention too, you met Marty already. We have Aaron here from Row, because I am not an expert in any of those things. So if you have, depending on your question, we can all help out.
Okay, very good. So it's on the floor, open for questions from commissioners?
You've read over the potential options.
Yeah.
Did any of them strike you?
Yeah, from our perspective, as we've talked about it, we like B. You guys have talked about B or D and some of those others. We like B because it does address potential future uses, which is, which is nice. It does go back to where we were back before, the new ordinances, where colleges and universities were included in that forty-four, or non-height exception, I guess, in the institutional and public use area. So we like that. I'd go a step further and say that from a college's perspective, Rodney mentioned he'd like the staff to work on that, his, you guys' staff to do that. We would also prefer that option because it is complicated, for one, and because if you direct your staff to do that, we as an institution would like to know that you feel pretty good about that option. You know, if we submit it, we don't know that you guys are going to pass it eventually. If you guys say you want to do it, there's a good likelihood that it will move forward, and we'd like to continue planning. We'd like to continue working on things, and unless we feel confident that this is going to pass, we may not be able to, we may pause for a while. And so we'd like to, so from our perspective, that's probably our best option.
D, you wouldn't consider D, you talking about your master planning, thinking about the future.
Yeah, when we talked about that as a group, Rodney and Aaron and Marty and I, it didn't seem like, the PUD didn't seem like a good option for us. We have a master plan, but, I mean, for example, where we're, where we put the event center right now, we originally in our master plan had it in a different location. And so the PUD, we end up being, moving stuff around anyway, and it just didn't seem like for what we have available to us in terms of planning would be a good, a good option. We prefer B.
What's the timeline for the project?
If all goes as planned, we can move all this along, summer's construction, probably August to start construction, and then September of twenty-six to move in. So it should take twelve to thirteen months to get construction done.
So just to make sure that I was clear and I heard correctly, do you say that there's already existing buildings on the property that are forty-five feet tall?
Yeah. Well, I can't, we can't vouch. I didn't take a take measure out, but it's got to be at least forty-five feet. Yeah, yeah.
It's three stories, right?
It's three stories.
Plus a little bit over the C lab?
I would think even the first, even the, so we, our first building was two thousand eight, when we moved into the Dome Center for Science and Health Technologies. That's a good-sized two-story building with all the stuff on top of it. I would bet that's over thirty-five feet, but I don't know that for sure.
Well, again, the stuff on top is beyond that. The ordinance has an exception for mechanicals and stairways and.
All right, good. All right.
That doesn't count.
I was counting the stuff on top. So, yes, at least, if nothing else, the three-story building would be at least thirty-five feet, probably forty.
It doesn't count in the ordinance, but it counts in terms of what people see with their eyes. And if the idea of the ordinance is to limit kind of the monolithic massiveness of buildings, it all factors in.
Yeah, because we do screening and all that kind of stuff, so you don't see the heating and cooling stuff.
But it's obvious if you drive out there that you're looking at a, something, like a campus, and it's got good-sized buildings already, so. Rodney, if we did pursue B, what's the timeline there for staff review proposal, any hearings that are required, recommendations?
Well, if you're comfortable, we could, we could prepare an amendment and prepare a hearing. I would hope, possibly for you, Mark, it will somewhat depend on the complexity of it, but we could certainly aim at that. I will say that typically what we would do is prepare an amendment, have you take a look at it, your March meeting, and then set a hearing for April. But if you were, if you were comfortable with it, we could, we could potentially do it as hearing in March. As long as we can get the amendment ready in time to get the notices out. We have to have notices out in the newspaper fifteen days ahead. For a text amendment, we don't have to mail notices out, so that's helpful, because we, so we don't have to factor in factor the time to, in the mail. But we still have to get the hearing notice in the paper fifteen days before the next meeting. So it would be a very short timeframe to develop the amendment.
If we did expedite, the commission approved in March, then it goes to the trustees at their next meeting?
Not quite that fast, no. The process for a text amendment for a township is, it starts with the planning commission public hearing, and ultimately your recommendation to the Board of Trustees. But then, under the State Zoning Act, our county planning commission has thirty days to review and comment on the amendment before it would actually be put on a board agenda. From a practical standpoint, based on the timing of meetings, usually there's about a three-week delay because we, our meeting habits work very well with their deadline for their meeting. We can take, if you make a recommendation, we can put it in the county planning commission's hands the next day. Their deadline is usually two days after our meeting to go on their meeting the following month. So it, but it's still, it does have a little bit of a timeframe delay there for the county act. And then when it goes to the board, they have two readings. They have an introduction, a first reading, and then they have a second reading at a separate meeting, and in between those two, we have another notice that goes in the paper for that second reading. So a little timing involved. Even, even after the board adopts it, there is a notice of adoption that has to go in the paper. And then we have to wait at least seven days after that, because there is a potential for a referendum process under the State Zoning Act. And anybody that would want to seek a referendum vote on an amendment has seven days to notify the clerk, township clerk, that they, that they intend to do that. Once that time period's passed, the ordinance is that effective. But it does take a little time. It, I, I would say three months is a good number to think about. It actually, I think, might be slightly less than that, but it's pretty close.
I feel like I'm the mouse headed toward the cheese and you're the person with the pen guiding me through.
Yeah, I, I think my inclination is to move forward with B and to provide, you know, an expedited, expedited opportunity there to get an answer back to the college so they can proceed.
I support that.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. I, I'm still unsure of why they were explicitly called out as an exception back when this was proposed. Because in my mind, it's clearly public, it's clearly institutional. They mentioned, they call out specifically K through twelve schools, which are, are also publicly funded institutions of learning. And then you also have libraries and museums, again, publicly funded institutions that incorporate, you know, some amount of law, knowledge and education. And I, I can't imagine that, that colleges and universities should, should be specifically carved out from not being able to participate in the same exemption from the, the height.
I just paid my property taxes and it's publicly funded.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Considering that there are already buildings on, on the property that are of the height that in question, I, I also support, I support B. I, I agree with Tom.
I guess I'll go ahead and move to direct the staff to prepare a draft amendment to allow business schools, colleges, universities, and publicly owned recreational facility buildings to exceed the maximum allowed height in the zoning district, subject to a corresponding increase in minimum required yard setbacks, and to schedule a public hearing for the proposed change.
I'll support.
Okay, so the motion was made by Brown, second by Hayes. And you got the motion? Okay, further discussion? Let me ask, so the reason you use the construction. Private schools operated for profit?
Yeah.
Because K twelve is already, already has that exception?
You're talking, you're talking about in the.
In B, yeah, in what you, in, just in your report.
It's, okay, because in the motion, in the motion, it doesn't include the K twelve and all that. Where are you looking at the report?
On page three, in your options.
Under B.
It's business schools, colleges, universities, and private schools operated for profit. Is that like the O'Halloran School of Beauty, or who are those people?
It could be like an ITT tech, something like that, too, you know, some type of.
Yeah, I believe that's simply the language in the zoning ordinance. Now, the, yeah, actually, the mo, the language in the motion is slightly different. So, the, so I apologize if there's a little bit of discrepancy there. The, the language in the motion is more accurate to what, what I think we're looking at here. Which is, which is business schools, colleges, universities, and publicly owned recreation facilities.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I'm fine with the, the text of the motion as is. The, the text of the proposed B on page three, private schools for profit would probably be a whole separate discussion that would warrant a whole different scenario, so.
Yeah, perhaps. So, okay, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, all right. So, yeah, the motion has been made as, as is laid out in, on page fifty-nine of the packet. So, further discussion?
Just on process, that, that will give us a sense of direction to the college and set the wheels in motion. What happens with the preliminary site plan? Does that come back?
It would come back to you after the, the amendment has, has been adopted. What, what I expect would happen in practicality is we would recommend that they, that we, that process start again once our, once the board has at least had a first reading on it. We want the board to at least have, have the first shot at it and say, if we like it, we not, if we want to move it to a second reading. At that point, I think we would suggest the applicant could go ahead and submit the revised preliminary site plan, I think, or whatever. Because I think there are a few other changes they were making. And that, because obviously there's a little time involved, at least three weeks before a meeting here, that we ask for those plans to be in our hands. So that, so again, to try and minimize the delay, we'll, we would have them go ahead and bring that into us once the first reading has taken place, with the, with their understanding that, of course, the board can choose not to adopt it. If, before you could act on it, the board would need to have adopted it, it would be, if, if active.
Do we, do we want to, I don't know, look at it tonight and give a first blush reaction, or?
Absolutely. If you have comments or thoughts on the plan, please.
All right, but that's a separate action. All right, so the motion is on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion to direct staff to do what they're going to do? All right, so roll call vote, please.
Lab?
Yes.
Cuadrado?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wolver?
Yes.
Ferring?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you all, and thank you in advance to Rodney Peter, who is working on our, on our, thank you.
Okay, not a problem. So we will take it, since you're up there, we'll take a short, I mean, it's a nice, granted, there probably will be changes, but it's a nicely, you know, multi-page document here, if anybody has any questions. You are, basically, you're putting it, if I'm reading the plans correctly, you're proposing to put it where you currently have a parking lot.
Correct, yep.
And so you're sacrificing a certain number of parking spaces. Given that you're adding something that will, in certain instances, draw a lot of people to campus, is there enough remaining parking on site to cover, for example, your graduation?
Yeah, we have spent a lot of time looking at this. A couple of pages in, somewhere, there's a, there's a little, it's probably very small in your version, but there's a parking study that shows a cer, we've been surveying for the past number of months, how many parking spots are being used currently. We've looked at how many spots we use for commencement ceremony now. We've, yeah, we've been a lot of, a lot of looking at this. And I will say, we feel very comfortable with the amount of parking for a couple of reasons. One, I feel good about the survey. We know how many spots are being used right now. And so we know that there's capacity for small and medium-sized events at that event center while classes are happening. We're fine. Even on our busiest day, which just happened back in January, the, the first day of winter classes, winter semester was bigger than fall semester this year, and so I feel good that was our busiest parking day of the year. We still had room, according to the ordinance and according to our, our calculations, for an event of five hundred or seven hundred people in that event center if we wanted to do that.
I think you said in your, in your notes, it was like fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah, we have plenty of parking spots available. So we, we would not do that on our first day, because we're already busy enough, but we could. Things like commencement, where we're going to have the building almost full, we'll, we'll get closer to the capacity. It doesn't quite fill up, but we get a lot of people there. We do those events on Saturdays, or we do an evening thing where everything else is closed down anyway. So we would not host anything big like that while things are going on. Although we, we could host some pretty big things there, but we wouldn't do a huge event like that. We would make sure that we're managing that capacity. One, parking, you know, might get tight, but we don't have to make staff either. I mean, it is, you can't do two huge events at the same time anyway. So, so we would be managing and monitoring all of that, but we feel very comfortable with, based on what we know we already use, based on what we have used for commencement in the past, we feel good about that.
I believe I've seen Matt Miller walking through the parking lot in the past with a clicker.
You have.
Checking to see how many for his spreadsheet.
Those are accurate counts, I will tell you. I've done them myself.
You mentioned on the plan, too, that there were other, like, off-site parking as well, is that true?
I don't remember.
Is there other areas that you would look to expand?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So, I'm not off-site parking, but our campus master plan that I referenced before does say, okay, if we're going to grow the campus, if we're going to add more buildings, everything, all that stuff, we've identified extra areas for parking somewhere. So if, if you guys drive by sometime and there's people parking in the grass and all that kind of stuff, we will be able to fix that. But we don't anticipate that at all. We anticipate having plenty of room. But in a worst case scenario, if we did decide, oh my goodness, this is crazy, we have place, place for extra parking if we need it.
It sounds like your parking capacity, you're only, you're losing a hundred and seventy-some odd parking, a hundred and seventy-one parking spots.
Correct, yep.
But it looks like you weren't even close to using that many.
Yes. Yeah, we, we've got plenty of extra spots that we aren't using right now. A, a whole parking lot is, we blocked it off because we just don't need it at the moment, so.
Yeah, I see the data. It's impressive. What's going to be the capacity for basketball?
So the seating right now, we originally, the, the plan you got there is a little bit bigger. We've been working with architects about shrinking and doing right sizing and all that kind of stuff. Seating for bleachers is probably, look, there's two different numbers. Sorry, I'm going to go long on this. I'm trying not to, but I've been looking at a lot of this data. When bleacher companies tell you how many seats are in a building, they use eighteen inches per, per person, per bottom. People don't really sit like that. In fact, I think in the ordinance, it's twenty-four, twenty-four inches per bottom is what, the seat is what it says there. So the bleacher company will tell us about seven hundred and fifty people in the bleachers. In reality, I have it here somewhere, five fifty, I think, is the real number at twenty-four feet, twenty-four inches per person. So it'll be a good number. We, right now at Maury Courts, we get between a hundred and fifty and two hundred or two hundred and fifty on a, on a good night for, for basketball games. We would expect that number to be pretty similar, maybe even down just a little bit. What, what's nice about Maury Courts is that people kind of just wander. And, and so they may be watching their kid play a little basketball game, and then they just, after Sunday, wander over and watch our game. We'll lose that traffic. What we'll gain is the traffic that comes because it's more of an event for us, and then so it feels more like a, a college game. They don't feel like that now. So, so we, this will, we may gain a little bit there. So we are still expecting two hundred, two hundred and fifty is what we'll get on a normal game. We feel good about it, yeah.
Are the men's and women's basketball programs successful this year?
Yeah, thank you for signing that up for me. Both men's and women's teams are ranked nationally right now. The women, at last count, I want to, I'm going to, I might get this wrong, so forgive me, but I think they're eighth in the country, and the men, I think, are fourteenth in the country, right about there. Very successful programs. The, the women's team went to nationals last year. So they, I mean, athletics is not the only thing we're doing in this, but it's, it's a big driver for this, because they, we need a place. We give them a lot of credit for being able to build a great program in Maury Courts, and it's a good facility, but our usage of it is really, it's tough. We, we have a storage room for our locker room, and it's, it's time to do something different, so. Which is one of the reasons the community's been very supportive of this. You know, they see where, you know, Chris at the Commission of Visitors Bureau talks about how there are things we could have here, and Amy at Maury Courts sees, so maybe there's some overflow opportunities for some of these stuff. But, but they also recognize the college has been without a facility. We are the only community college with a basketball team without a, without a gym in all of the state. And we, it's about time we fixed that, so. Which is why I really appreciate your support, because it's important to us. Good questions. Anything else?
No questions.
We are developing right now the next phase of these plans and all the good stuff that we're working on, and I will have more fun details for you later.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so those are our new business items. The next item is the part of the meeting where everybody is anxiously awaiting, which is extended public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not, you're invited to do so at this time. I ask you to come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the minutes, and restrict your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comments open at eight eighteen.
There's nobody online.
Okay. The only time there's been people online is when they were there for something else we were doing. But I think she made a public comment, didn't she? All right, so people have had their say for this evening, so last call for public comments. So extended public comment is closed at eight nineteen. Then the last item is final board comment. Any comments from board members? Give you another member, another reminder, and also we have a new member. Michigan Association of Planning, in particular, offers trainings. And they are, there's a big wave of them coming in March. Some of them are actually online, and others of them are in different towns around the state, Frankenmuth and probably Kalamazoo and some others. There aren't any physically in Mount Pleasant in this round, but there are some online ones. So whatever you've sent to us before, make sure that Everett gets it, and if he's interested.
Definitely.
If you're interested, just tell Peter, and he'll register you, and then you just have to, then you get in the list, and they'll either email you the link, or if you're, if it's a thing you drive to, then you just show up and you're on the list.
Planning and zoning is the middle of March.
Okay.
Yeah, planning and zoning essentials is the most general one, and there are some more specific ones.
Are these during the day or are they in the evening?
Uh, they're mostly in the evenings. Some of them are in the afternoons, but a lot of them are evenings.
They're usually about an hour?
Um, no, they usually, some of them run as much as like three hours, but for the, some of the in-person ones, they'll give you dinner. So, and I always, I always say that Rodney, in his former life, was sometimes a presenter at some of these things, and I swear I went to at least one where he was one of the presenters, so.
And he keeps coming back for more.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed doing it. It was for the Michigan Township, Township Association. It was a summer sequence, we actually toured the state, I think it was three or four times, I did a presentation in different places around the state.
Yeah, that's the other. So there's Michigan Association of Planning, MAP, and there's MTA, Michigan Township Association, and they both do these sorts of things. Anything else, any other comments from people? So again, our next meeting is in March. I think it's also the eighteenth, because we're, it's the twenty-eighth, so there's no changeover. So March eighteenth, we'll meet again. We will probably have at least one public hearing. We might have another, so something to look forward to. We have completed our agendas. We stand adjournment at eight twenty-one.